To the 1977 definition of existing development.
You know, let me, I used to know, I don't know if he's still, city attorney in Pacifica, but I knew the guy that used to be, let me see. Oh, no. It's a different city attorney, I don't know this one, oh well. I can still call him.
Who's the city manager now? I think they have a relatively new one, I feel like, I feel like a few years ago they were.
Well then you should call him, you have a lot in common. Where is she waiting? That's also your job, is to make sure that the meetings start on time. Because she didn't, she didn't, wasn't paying any attention.
Thank you all for coming. It is 6:08, so we're going to call the meeting to order. The special meeting of the city council reorganization. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Beer. The record will reflect that councilmember Beer is absent. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vatterlos.
Here. And I'm going to lead us in the pledge. To lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not used to leading it myself. Now, I would like to invite public comment. Public comment is limited to only the special order of business for the city council reorganization. I would first like to invite dignitaries to make their remarks. Katrina Rill from Jackie Spears office.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Katrina Rill, I'm from Congresswoman Jackie Spears office. And it's my pleasure to be here at the reorganizational meeting tonight. As you know, if there are any issues, any concerns that you have, that have to do with the federal government or anything else, I'm the liaison between Pacifica and Congresswoman Spears office. So that's all I have for now, thanks.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you for the 20.
Oh, go ahead.
I just, being Katrina was here, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Jackie. She was able to get us as an attachment onto a bill and be able to get some money, funding for capital infrastructure to, for climate. You want to come up and clarify, because I just read the email once and we got it this afternoon?
We don't have the funding quite yet. But she basically got an amendment into one of the bills that would provide federal funding for existing infrastructure that is damaged or impacted by sea level rise. So the bill passed in the House yesterday, and it is now moving to the Senate. So, as you know, the whole process in the federal government is quite slow. But it's one step, and, you know, it's gonna be a while until there's money, but, you know, it's, it's one of the first steps. And we, of course, when we passed this amendment, we were thinking about the Pacifica seawall, so, and that was mentioned in the press release that we sent out today. No money yet.
I just wanted to say thank you and acknowledge that for Jackie.
And Delmar Martinez from Senator Hill's office.
Thank you Mayor Vatterlos, congratulations on your year as mayor. I just wanted to quickly just say that I'm the district representative for the city of Pacifica, so if there are any state-level issues, I'd be more than happy to act as a resource. So, congratulations again to all of you, and I'm just a phone call away, thank you.
Thank you. My pen? Okay, now it's public comment, so the first public comment is Suzanne Moore and Robert Holland? Are you guys speaking together? Then John Keener, Julie Sterben.
Good evening. So our family, Sue, wanted to thank you for your year of service, and we know that your family has to be proud of you. I actually had the honor of meeting your father once, and he made that very clear. And we also just feel inspired that in spite of differences of opinions in our community, that this kind of transition can occur amicably. So, good night and congratulations.
Thank you. John Keener, Julie Sterben, Hyah Gordon.
Good evening, council and staff and Madam Mayor, for a few minutes yet. So, when I was mayor, I felt a certain responsibility for every pothole and so on, and some nights I didn't sleep well because of that. And my point is that being mayor sometimes can be hard, but it can be rewarding as well, when something you helped negotiate turned out well, or when folks are so appreciative that, that you just showed up and said a few words. Last year in October, Sue and I, and Sue, I mean Sue Vatterlos, but we're on a first-name basis, were talking, and she said something like, "Oh, I'm afraid you're not gonna let me be mayor." And I said, "Oh, you're nuts, I'm definitely gonna vote for you." Yeah, well, I lost the election, and I didn't get to vote, but everybody else on council did, and so Sue became mayor. And she did a great job. She probably holds the world record in Pacifica events attended. This is in addition to her weightlifting records. And I'm proud to call her my friend. Although with the obligatory, we don't agree on everything. Everybody has a different style, different strengths and weaknesses, and I hope when you, the council, select the next mayor, you will take this into account, and I hope you follow tradition and select the current Pro Tem, Deirdre Martin. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Julie Sterben, Hyah Gordon, Denny Astis.
I just wanted to congratulate Deirdre Martin on her move from mayor pro tem to mayor. She's been an excellent council member and able to hear all points of view, and put them into a coherent, understandable whole, and I look forward to her leadership. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hyah Gordon, Denny Astis, and Deej Gold.
Good evening, everyone. I've known Deirdre and seen her on the council for the last three years, and what strikes me the most about her is, well, she's smart, and she's compassionate, and she's prepared and does her homework. But even greater than that, she is unfailingly committed to things that are really important to me, and that would be justice, fairness, and equality for all. And so I am really looking forward to Deirdre taking her, your experience from being on the council and your year as mayor pro tem, and being to use all of that as mayor, because the people of Pacifica really need that. Thank you.
Denny, Deej, and Dan Underhill.
Good evening. First I just want to say that since John mentioned the potholes, I will now, I'm not gonna hold you responsible, Sue, because I had never said anything before, but in the next year is coming around, okay? I wanted to say that it's been an honor to know and work with Deirdre in her years on the council. It's been an inspiration to me, to see how hard she works and how she considers all the issues really thoroughly with both compassion and information. And I'm really looking forward to her serving as mayor of Pacifica. Thank you all.
Deej, Dan Underhill, Lynn Adams.
My name's Deej Gold, I live in Pacific Manor. I want to acknowledge for all of us that this is a tough time. It's a tough time for government, it's a tough time in civic life, with so much disinformation and hate being spread from the national level on down through our social media. And some of it comes to rest here at the Pacifica City Council, and comes to rest with the mayor. That's why I think maybe being the mayor of Pacifica is a very thankless job, and yet, Sue, you've done it, and Mike's done it, people have done it, and I'm look forward to Deirdre taking her swing at this thankless job, because she's done a really good job trying to bridge some of the huge gaps that are developing in our civil society between the housed and the unhoused, between the documented and citizens and the undocumented, between people who want to surf and people who don't want to surf, you know, just trying to, to make us a whole community. I don't know that it's possible, and I don't know that the mayor actually can do that, but I wish Deirdre luck in the coming year, thank you.
Dan, Lynn Adams, Dan Studding.
Hello, I haven't been participating in, in city council meetings, I haven't been present for a lot of them, but I, I came to, to express my appreciation to Deirdre Martin and encourage her to, um, um, hope that she becomes our next mayor, and that's it.
Lynn, Dan, and then Victoria Becker.
Thank you all for a year of service. Seems like it goes by fast, and yet it seems like it's forever. Sue, thank you as mayor for having, having the presence of mind to keep everything going. Deirdre, thank you for serving as mayor pro tem. I really appreciate your outreach in the community, I really appreciate your contributions to the Pacific Beach Coalition, but to the city of Pacifica even more. So, good luck with the vote today. Deirdre, I appreciate you being the mayor pro tem, I wish you luck, and thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. Dan, and then Victoria's the last card I have.
Good evening, guys, and happy holidays. My name's Dan Studding, I'm a California Democratic Party state delegate. Pacifica's such a unique place, we're one of the few cities in California that's had a Tea Party mayor, mayor that was president of the Tea Party. We've had folks elected that were solely funded by the Republican Party, and we'd have Democrats all working together here. It's so unique. I'd just like to thank Deirdre Martin for always standing up for the little people, for never selling out, for never standing down. Immigrants, those who can't fight for themselves, thank you. And I would like to say, I was a DNC speaker at the Dealing Spillings Council in June, and over and over they went over the 14 Democratic principles, and I can say, as an individual, no one in this city's history has represented the Democratic Party better than you have. Thank you.
Victoria Becker.
Hi, I'm Victoria Becker. I just want to thank councilperson Deirdre Martin for her many principled positions, even in the face of opposition. As an excellent public servant, you helped build a true progressive community in Pacifica.
Thank you. Outgoing mayor's remarks. As you know, I don't usually give long speeches, so I have a few things to say. And first of all, I'd like to thank all of our staff. Every person here works so hard for the city of Pacifica, and they're so important to all of us, because without the staff, we wouldn't get anything done. I'd like to thank all the other council members, same thing. We are a group, and we do things together, and we end up with an end that everybody must agree with, and that's the way the council works. I would like to thank everyone who serves on commissions and committees, I think those are really thankless jobs, and it's a lot of work to be a volunteer and serve on any one of the commissions and committees. And then I'd like to thank all the public, because of course, the public is what drives us. The comments that we get, the emails that we get, the people who come and speak to us in the audience, and we appreciate every one of you and every person who's ever gotten up to the mic. I used to do it all the time, it was never easy to get up and speak at the mic. We've accomplished quite a lot of things this year. Some of them we started this year, some of them we finished. I just have a few listed. The equalization basin, which is going to save our city so much, because the overflows will go into the equalization basin. It wasn't without any problems, but it's almost done, and that's a thankful thing. The new overcrossing, which is the most beautiful overcrossing on a highway that I've seen in a long time. It's lovely that we have it, and that we don't have the crumbling one that was there. The Fazler parking lot, which we got a grant from the county to put a parking lot at the hiking trail on the top of Fazler. The LCP, which we worked on and worked on and worked on. The public meetings that we had, talked to people about the local coastal program, and now that's in with the Coastal Commission. We're working on the general plan and the Sharp Park specific plan. We also got a grant for $150,000 for, to study the seawalls, and that's a good step forward, along with this program that should get passed from the Senate. Home for All. We did the sessions with Home for All, and that was a really good, new way to accomplish things, where people sat at the tables and all talked, and the city council listened. We didn't speak, we didn't preach, we didn't give our opinions, we just listened, and that was a new way of dealing with public meetings that we'd never done before. We have the UP task force that is still continuing, and we just passed the RV ordinance, giving lots of extra time, so that hopefully, by the time that this comes along in March 30th, that we'll have options, instead of continuing and continuing the same way it's been. So those are just a few of the things that we did this year, so we really did accomplish a lot of things, and that's thanks to everybody. And that concludes my comments.
Can we comment?
Yes.
I would like to say, congratulations on a job well done. It was a wonderful year working with you. It's been a wonderful three years working with you. I know from all appearances, we don't get along, but it's probably usually just politics. We actually do get along, and we're a lot alike, believe it or not. Our sense of humor, our ability to argue and get right over it, and I admire that about you. And you, you truly set the bar really high, well, number one, in terms of meetings, because I think Sue DeGree was the only other person matched with you in terms of attendance at meetings.
Oh.
In the community, over the hill, at the state level. That's appreciated. So I want to say congratulations on a job well done, and you're, you're leaving some really big shoes to fill. Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your year, and you survived it, and I don't see any knives in the back or flogging.
In the front and the back.
So congratulations on your, well done.
Thank you very much for making my first year on council one that was an opportunity to hear from all sides, to have all points of view represented, and to have well-run and effective meetings. It's a good model, and I really appreciate all the work that you did to make that happen. Thanks.
Thank you, and of course, like I said in the beginning, no one can do this by themselves. It is kind of a sad thing. I mean, today's my last day, last night I said, "Wow, it's my last night being the mayor." Today, "Oh, it's my last day being the mayor." And there are a lot of good things about that. Because I've told many people that if you open your email and see something that says you're invited another time, you know, that used to be a great thing, but when you get five in one day, and you know you can't attend five events on one night, and you have to figure out which one you're gonna go to, and it is extremely time-consuming being the mayor, it's a full-time job, even though it's not a full-time job. So, I would like to thank everyone again, thank you.
Gift from the city of Pacifica?
Thank you.
Do you want her to open it now? Yeah.
It's the gavel, which I just recently started using.
From the council. She made a dent in this one, so they had to get her a new one.
Funny to say this now, but I really don't like being the center of attention, and this is very awkward. It doesn't seem like it, but it's true. Oh, this is beautiful. This is a Rockaway picture that was done by Sharon Walker, and it, it's a, it's a beautiful picture. It's where I spend most of my time in my life, because that's where I work. So, it's my office, it's where people come and see me, so, it's beautiful. Thank you all, thank you. Okay. Now, we're moving on to the selection of the new mayor. I would like to invite nominations for mayor.
Can we push that button? She pushed her button. I'm gonna speak.
You voted.
Oh, I voted.
Oh, I voted. Yes, I vote that I would like to have a nomination. I would like to take a moment to say that I think it would be good for us to consider postponing the selection, because I know that Mary Bear can't be here tonight, and that is not her choice. I was giving it a lot of thought today, going back and forth. And what I decided is that the best way to move forward would be to continue to move forward. And therefore, I think it's important to have continuity. I think it's important to have good governance, and I therefore nominate Deirdre Martin as mayor.
And do we have a second?
We don't.
I thought you made a motion to postpone.
No.
Oh.
I was saying that I was thinking we should postpone, because Mary can't be here, and I know she wants to participate.
We don't need a second. Oh, okay. That's what I thought you were saying also.
I was saying I wanted, I was thinking earlier today that we should postpone, but then I was thinking back and forth on, well, why, really? I think the most important thing is for us to continue on, and I think the best thing for Pacifica is for us to continue on the path that we've started. I think we have a lot of projects that we have underway, and I think the most important thing is for us to continue moving forward together.
Yes. I'll second.
So now, just vote.
Please vote. I didn't vote yet.
No, that's not my vote.
Never she pressed the wrong button.
Let's start over again.
That was me pushing my talking button.
And that motion passes four to zero. Selection, thank you. Selection of a mayor pro tem.
I will nominate Sue Beckmeyer to be mayor pro tem.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes four to zero. And now, I'm going to get up and move, and the incoming mayor can move over.
Do we still get to sit next to each other?
I don't think so.
Really?
No, the mayor pro tem will sit there.
She moves there now.
We can sit wherever we want.
You can't sit where we want.
It's funny that we have, almost have assigned seats here, so it's just the way it goes.
So incoming mayor's remarks. I actually did not prepare any. But I want to thank you all up here for being able to work together. Even though we may not always agree on things, we still somehow managed to get to a good compromise. I want to thank every one of you who showed up here tonight and who emailed and called in support. Nothing was guaranteed this evening, but what I do know is that when we get together, we can move mountains. And the past three years have been amazing because of you. And we've got a great year ahead of us, 2020. We're going to move some more mountains. We're going to all continue to work together, and we're going to have some contention, and we're going to be comfortable with being uncomfortable, but we're going to get there. And thank you to city staff for making our job easy. Thank you to, you know, to everyone. And this is a democratic process, and I appreciate it. Go Giants. Oh, there's cake. A meeting adjourned.